Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tana Tewksbury Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is August 25th, 2020, and we're gonna start the meeting. First on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes for June 30th, 2022, and July 28th, 2022.
I'm hoping for the meeting minutes from June 30th, 2022, and also July 28th, 2022.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the continued hearing for Tammy Chow for variance under Section 5.3.1 E3 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a side yard setback to build a 12 by 24 detached garage as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 180 Salem Road, Assessors Map 95, Lot 150, zoned residential. And this was continued from 7/28/2022.
Hello.
Hello. Name and address, please, for the board?
Tammy Chow, and my address is 180 Salem Road in Tewksbury.
Tammy, can you tell me what you're trying to do, please?
So I'm trying to build a detached garage on my property for storing my car and parking it.
So I'm looking at it, it's right here?
Yes.
Step back. First garage, and it's just eight feet instead of 10. It's not wide enough, though. Seven and a half there.
How close is your neighbor on that side?
To the right side, about, from the garage, from the house.
From the property line?
Um, I'd say, I, it was over two feet from the property line.
So you got a 10-foot, you got a 10-foot easement?
It's five on five on the east side, so I have five, and he has five.
Okay. So your, your neighbor's house, or, or the first structure that way on the neighbor's side, how close is it to their property line, you know, roughly, give or take?
I'd say it's between 10 and 15 feet, I believe.
I hope it's more than 10, because they'd be here with us. What's the reason for not putting it on the other side?
The lawn is there, there's also a bunch of trees in front of that area. The driveway is more conducive to having it on the, the right-hand side of my house as opposed to the left.
Do you have a driveway now?
Yes, I do. It's the kind of odd long figure in the front of the house. It's a semicircular driveway, and then on the right side is the driveway extension that pushes back against the house.
Explain that driveway to me again.
It's a semicircular in the front.
Yep.
And then that area where the garage is located, that's currently driveway on my property.
Okay.
It's kind of drawn out, see it?
I can see it, I just couldn't understand what you were saying.
Yeah, I wasn't either until she mishat it. Board, do you have anything else, any other questions? Dan?
I have one question. I might, uh, on the proposed diagram, or actually the, the etching of the, of the building, which way is that the side door, does it open up, does it open up towards the neighbor's property, or does it open up towards your?
Towards my house.
Toward your home?
Yep.
Joe, any questions?
I don't.
All right. A, a public hearing, is there anybody here who'd like to speak on this? Gentlemen, is there anything else you want to add?
Is that the right section that she should be getting a variance from?
Me, me.
I mean, her variance should be the side yard setback, right?
What's that, what is it?
They're calling it an accessory structure.
531? Yeah, no, that's right. 5312.
E? 531, two or three? Three, accessory structure.
Uh, it should be two, I would think. Three is right, detached accessories. E3, that's correct.
Now they changed the numbers, and it's a little bit confusing now, right?
So it's still under the general requirements, right? And then it is under E3, Section E and 3.
Okay.
So yeah, it's right. That's the right request. Okay, somebody want to make a motion to close?
I have one more question.
Okay.
What, um, what stopped you from moving it closer to the house?
The driveway is at an awkward kind of location where, in order to pull in to the, to the garage itself, it needed to be a certain distance away. And then, I think, moving it closer to the, the house, it would have to be, it was just like the location of it didn't really work with, you know, with like pulling in and out of my car.
All right, I have no more questions.
Someone want to make a motion to close?
Who's, who, the voting?
Oh, the voting members on this one is myself, Joe, and Mike. Somebody would like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
I'll make, I'll move to close both parts of the hearing, public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So Joe or Mike, could you make a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion for a variance under Section 5.3.1 E3 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a side yard setback to build a 12 by 24 detached garage as shown on the plans filed by the board. The property is located at 180 Salem Road, Assessors Map 95, Lot 150, zoned residential.
Joe, do you want to second that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Next on the agenda for new hearings is Ambassador Pools on behalf of Peter and Melissa Gagnon for variance under Section 5.3.1 E3 for, of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for front yard setback for previous installed above-ground pool as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 1042 East Street, Assessors Map 103, Lot 79, zoned residential. And the voting members on this one will be Rob, Dan, and Mike. Name and address for the board, please?
Um, hello, my name is Jennifer Abate, A-B-A-T-E, and I'm the new permit coordinator at Ambassador Pools located in Canton, Massachusetts. I'm here today representing my company and the Gagnon residence at 1042 East Street in Tewksbury, Mass. We're here today seeking a variance for a 16 by 24 above-ground pool. My company had installed last season without a permit. We installed this pool in the front setback of this home. Your sector, your town bylaw states we need to be behind this. We hope the variance can be granted today due to the very odd-shaped lot this parcel is. This parcel is a triangle. All of the properties on this street are square and rectangular. If the Gagnons want to introduce themselves, or I could go on with maybe one more.
That's fine, we're both.
I'm Melissa Gagnon, 1042 East Street.
And I'm Mike LeBrie, Melissa Gagnon's fiancee, 1042 East Street as well. And Zach Gagnon, Zach LeBrie as well.
Hi, Zach.
There was a huge disconnect here. My company dropped the ball big time, and we installed the pool without going through the proper processes here. I'm here today to clean up this mess, for the homeowners especially. On Ju, in June, the Gagnon residents reached out for permitting help due to receiving a code violation in the mail. They called our Canton office, and I started this permit variance packet process for them. The permit coordinator, Jose, assigned to this permit last season, is no longer employed with us at our company for reasons such as this. We started the building permit process for the Gagnons in September of 2021 and did not follow through, leaving the homeowners and my company at risk. So I'm here today to ask for a variance to keep the pool in the, in the front of the property. At the end of the day, we want the Gagnons to be happy with the pool, we want the neighbors, the butters, everybody to be okay with this. At the end of the day, our pools are movable.
Are or not?
They are. So we hope, at the end of the day, the pool can stay in the same spot it is now, but we're here to take recommendations from you tonight.
How long has the pool been up? Last year, you said?
Yeah, was it installed?
Since last October.
On the plot plan, the pool is, is the square that's sitting right in front of the house?
And the yard is completely fenced in as well.
Yeah, where the pool is, it's completely fenced in.
What type of fence is there?
It's, um, one of the wood picket fences.
Okay. Is the pool visible from the street when you drive by?
Barely.
You can just see, there's a fence around the deck of the pool, because it's an above-ground, there's, you can see some of the white fencing, maybe like this much of it.
When you go for a permit, do you just do the building permit, or do you do all of it?
So my company will do the building permit, we don't do the electrical, we do the building permit, and then if need be, zoning, health department, and so forth, but we do all the building side aspects.
She applied for a permit, or Jose applied for a permit?
Yes.
Was denied?
Yes.
Yes.
In September, I think September 13th, the building department admin and him were going back and forth.
Was denied?
Yep.
Put the pool up anyways. Did you have an electrician wire it?
Yeah, so that's what, because I had asked Jose for a copy of the pool permit, and he never got back to me, and I have a couple emails where I reached out, but he never got back to me. So then, in the spring, in May, when I started the electrical portion of it, and the electrician came down to do the work, that's when we figured out we actually didn't have the permit. And so, that's when we started this process, because we, because they installed the pool and we paid and filled out permit applications, we assumed that they wouldn't install it without that.
Well, you're the homeowner, you hired a company to do it, you expected it to be done.
Yeah, and so unfortunately, I just assumed he wasn't getting back to me with the copy of the permit, but I assumed they had gotten the permit.
When you say May, do you mean May of last year, or May of this year?
So May of this year is when the electrician came, and that's when I found out that the pool that was installed in October was not permitted, because the electrician is, went for a separate permit, and then you guys said, wait a minute, what pool? So.
So are you using the pool?
We are.
No blame, it's been odd.
I don't have any questions.
Gentlemen, you ready for that? We have no questions?
No question.
Uh, it being an open hearing, is there anybody here who'd like to speak on this? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to approve Ambassador Pools on behalf of Peter and Melissa Gagnon for variance under Section 5.3.1 E3 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a front yard setback for previously installed above-ground pool as shown on panels filed with this board. Said property is located at 1042 East Street, Assessors Map 103, Lot 79, zoned residential.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Second, and then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're approved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Enjoy.
I would suggest making sure, um, you do all the right permits now, you know, make sure the electrician gets a permit, make sure it's inspected. You don't want to get a job.
Correctly.
Lesson learned, I'm following up on contractor.
Yep. It's a hard lesson to learn.
Yes.
It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
No, I know.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, buddy.
Okay, next on the agenda, Joe Boucher for a variance under Section 5.3.2 for, of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a side setbacks and lot coverage and a special permit under Section 8.1.1(c) to alter a previous non-conforming structure in order to construct a 24 by 22 garage with an 8 by 10 breezeway addition as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 6 Memorial Drive, Assessors Map 99, Lot 34, zoned residential. Name and address for the board, please?
Joseph Boucher, 6 Memorial Drive in Tewksbury.
Linda Boucher, 6 Memorial Drive, Tewksbury.
Thank you. Can you talk about what you're trying to do here, please?
Well, basically, we just, essentially want a garage to help me in the wintertime when I'm trying to clean the snow off the car, I've fallen several times now, and last time was, was a good fall.
So you're looking at being 4.84 feet off your sideline?
Yes.
And 38 feet off your front line?
Mm-hmm.
A little better than eight and a half feet between the house and the garage?
Uh, yeah, approximately.
Give or take, 8.71?
Something like that.
Something like that. The neighbor on that side?
Uh, yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
David Joyce.
How, um, how close is their house to their property line?
Uh, their house is 18 feet.
So you're looking at 22 feet between structures?
Mm-hmm.
Give or take? Single-story garage, no bathroom, no plumbing, no heat?
No.
Lights on the roof? Lights on the roof, keep the car out of the snow?
Exactly.
Foundation or footing?
Um, well, I imagine it would be a foundation.
No foundation.
Yeah, we've lived in the house for 49 years, we want to continue to live there. We want to have to move, get somebody to plow now that we're getting older.
Snow's not getting any lighter?
No. No, it's not. And we're getting older.
I understand. It's not getting any lighter for me either.
Okay, and the voting members on this is Joe, myself, and Dan. Just in case I haven't mentioned it, which I don't think I did.
What were you asking about Joyce? David Joyce and Kelly Joyce, those are your neighbors?
Yes.
What I was asking was how close are those from this side?
What was the answer?
You said about 18 feet? Give or take?
And then it's the house, 18 feet, and then it's their house, your neighbor?
What about it?
Yeah, David and Kelly Joyce, you said 18 feet from where?
I'd say about it.
From the property line?
From the property line, yeah. Yeah, they've already agreed with, with, with what we want to do.
We discussed it with them.
Okay. Anything else you guys want to ask? Somebody want to close? Uh, it being a public hearing, is there anybody here that'd like to speak on this? No?
We want to close the public hearing?
Both sides? Both parts?
Both sides, yeah. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You want to make a motion, somebody? This one is Joe, myself, and Dan.
Make sure you do one, like three of them.
There's three of them.
Special permit first.
Yep.
I make a motion for Joseph Boucher for a variance under Section 5.3.2.
You got to do the special permit first, so we, for, um, for a special permit under, do you see that, where it breaks off in the next sentence? Because we have to do those separately.
I'll stop at the special part.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion for a special permit under Section 8.1.1(c) to alter a previous non-conforming structure in order to construct a 24 by 22 garage with an 8 by 10 breezeway addition as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 6 Memorial Drive, Assessors Map 99, Lot 34, zoned residential.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're approved. Oh, wait, we got one more to go.
Two more to go.
Okay.
I make a motion for Joseph Boucher for a variance under Section 5.3.2 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws for setbacks under lot coverage. Do I continue reading that on the, all the way through?
In order to construct.
Sorry.
Third line down.
Yep, in order to construct a 24 by 22 garage with an 8 by 10 breezeway addition as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property located 6 Memorial Drive, Assessors Map 99, Lot 34, zoned residential.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there's one more you need to throw in there. No, it's the same one. I threw it through the residential. So you need to do the other one, I think we did the, it's another special permit, no?
It's two variances. Over 20%, closer to 15 feet.
Do we need, do we need to approve the third one? Isn't it captured in the first one? It's the same section?
Both side and lot coverage, it says. Side, yeah, setbacks and lot coverage.
Is that the third one here?
It's to approve side yard setbacks and lot coverage. Right, that last one you read? Section 5.3.2.
Okay.
Right, so we just approve that one? Covered it. You are approved. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Have luck.
Thank you.
Next is Carl Jonas Rosland for a variance under Section 5.3.2 of Tewksbury zoning bylaw for side yard setbacks and a special permit under Section 8.1.1(c) to alter a previously non-conforming structure to order, in order to construct a 21 nine by 12 deck as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 5 Tangle Road, Assessors Map Lot, uh, Assessors Map 110, Lot 22, zoned residential. Voting members is Mike, Rob, and myself.
I also have some clarification documents.
Okay.
Thank you, Board. This is, I have a few comments for all of you there.
Thank you.
It's just initial.
Thank you. Okay, and when you have a seat, could I have your name and address for the board, please?
My name is Carl Jonas Rosland, I go by Jonas, I live at 5 Tangle Road in here in Tewksbury.
Okay, can you speak on what you're doing, please?
Yeah, sure. We moved into our house about four years ago, and during the home inspection, we were told that the, the deck that was already there would need a replacement within a few years. And we, we saw this spring that it was essentially falling apart and becoming dangerous for me, my wife, and my three-year-old kid. We had a contractor come out, and they saw that the, the fasteners were all rusted through, the wood started to deteriorate, so we said, okay, let's, let's fix it. We, we've been using this contractor for a few other jobs as well. We figured we didn't need a permit, first of all. We didn't think we need a permit, needed a permit because it was a replacement. We've learned that we obviously needed a permit, so now we're here because we, we initially bought it in 2018. I attached a, the mortgage plot plan in, in the application. You can see that the plot plan is not correct compared to the new plot plan, one version of which I gave you right now. So the old plot plan showed that the entire wooden deck was within the lot. The new plot plan shows that it is not. So what I would like to do is to be able to build up to the lot line. That is my request. That is my request.
How close is your house to the property line?
Uh, on the, the plot plan, it says 4 feet. That's the closest. The house was built in 84.
And the town owns the land next to you?
Yes. It's roughly 100 feet from our lot line to the next neighbor. And we're in the process of trying to purchase that part of, that land from the town. Talking to Steven Sadwick and Taj Engineering and then Attorney Plunkett.
So is the deck built already?
Uh, so it's half-built.
Then you got the notice?
Yeah, exactly.
Is the deck original with the house? Do you know? Is that deck built originally with the house?
I don't know, but I believe it was not. Uh, it has been there for between 20 and 25 years at least.
And then this submitted this picture here?
Yeah.
That was on your mortgage application?
Exactly.
And that's not correct?
Yeah, if you compare that to the, the later one, it is wildly incorrect.
The original one?
Yeah, so we were going on the assumption that that was correct, but it was not.
Okay.
So now we're just trying to do it the right way.
The side, on the side of the house where they walk away from the deck is? That's the side that Tuxbury owns the property?
Yes.
And you said it's 100 feet in that direction to the next house?
Yeah, roughly 100 feet, yeah. Uh, I believe you can see that on the map I printed out from the GIS as well. It should be in there. You can see the, the next door neighbor, well, next door being, not quite next door.
And you're in the process of purchasing that land?
We're, we're looking at how we can do that. That's the plan, yes. We're hoping we can finish that purchase sometime next year.
So the application is asking for a special permit in the variance? The variance is for the setbacks, right?
Yeah, 5 dot 3 dot 2s.
5 dot 3 dot 2.
Setbacks. It's all the ones that we just do, the same ones, 5 dot 3 dot 2s, side yard setbacks.
So the, and the deck is 4 feet from the property line or closer? The house you said was 4 feet from the property line?
Yes, exactly.
So it's even, it's 2 feet from the property line?
So, so 4 feet or closer, yes.
And on the plot plan, that X, that's where you went over the Tuxbury line and you, and you're no longer doing that?
Exactly, exactly. So the, the X marks the, the part of the deck that was built that will remove.
It was removed?
Uh, it, it will be removed because right now we have a stop-work order. We don't want to do anything. So we're going to remove that as soon as we are able to and restore it back to what it was, which is essentially just glass.
I got nothing.
I got nothing? All right. I, I understand the, I understand the variance. I'm not 100% sure on the special permit.
Existing non-conforming.
Because it's pre, it's already built?
No, because the house is 4 feet away from the property line.
All right. And the house was built in 1984? I'm good.
I'm good, too.
It being an open hearing, is there anybody here to speak on it? On this? No? Okay.
I'll make a motion to close both pots in the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The voting members on this is Mike, Rob, and Dan. Not myself, sorry. It's Mike, Rob, and Dan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Kyle Jonas Rosland for a special permit under Section 8 dot 1 dot 1 dot C to alter a previously non-conforming structure in order to construct a 21-foot 9-inch by 12-foot deck as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 5 Tanger Road. Probably said that wrong. Assessors map 110 lot 22, zoned residential.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a second motion for Kyle Jonas Rosland for a variance under Section 5 dot 3 dot 2 of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw for side setbacks to alter a previously non-conforming structure in order to construct a 21-foot 9-inch by 12-foot deck as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 5 Tanger, or is it not? Road, assessors map 110 lot 22, zoned residential.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're approved?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Tuxbury Home Build on behalf of the Town of Tuxbury for a special permit under Section 8 dot 1 dot 1 C of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw to construct or reconstruct a previously existing non-conforming structure in order to construct a one, a single-family home as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 97 Florence Ave. Assessors map 94 lot 102, zoned residential.
Who are the voting members?
Uh, the voting members are Rob, Mike, and myself.
I think I had Nancy, Rob, and Joe.
Oh, you had Joe on this one?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay. Sorry about that. So it's Rob, Joe, and me. Okay, name and address, please?
Bruce Van Alitis, 218 Foster Road, and the President of Tuxbury Home Build.
Can you talk on what you're trying to build, please?
Yeah, so this lot was voted on a town meeting to be used for affordable housing back in 2018, I think it was. Actually, it might have been 2017. I have the minutes from the meeting, if, if anybody would like them. So we, the, the town then put it up for an RFP. We, we were awarded the RFP. The select board just approved the transfer to us. We haven't done the paperwork yet, but it'll be done in the next few days, we hope. And the goal is basically to demo the existing home and put up a new one in the same footprint.
Putting up a bigger home or a smaller home? I know, same footprint?
Same footprint, two-story, same thing. It'll probably be a three-bedroom, probably, with all the bedrooms on the second floor. It's our current conceptual plan. We're, Rick Hamm, our sort of project manager, is already working with the building inspector to work on a demo permit and get the ball rolling on the permit, hoping that this went well. Our, our timeline is compressed. That's why we sort of rushed to get on your agendas because Shaw Tech kids generally work and build our homes. They did that at the South Street build and we're hoping to get the foundation and the ground fast enough for them to do some work this year, in this quarter.
It's nice, it's good for them.
Thanks, bro.
Yeah, they built the entire home over at 1047 South. There was a separate home that came in front of you, maybe three years ago now, four years ago.
Yeah, I remember.
Different reasons, but...
Okay. Any other questions, board? It being an open hearing, is there anybody here that'd like to speak on this? Okay. No? Somebody?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Me? Okay. I make a motion to approve Tuxbury Home Build on behalf of Tux, of Town of Tuxbury for a special permit under Section 8 dot 1 dot 1 dot C of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw to reconstruct a previously existing non-conforming structure in order to construct a single-family home as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 97 Florence Ave. Assessors map 94 lot 102, zoned residential.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much.
All approved. Thank you, good luck.
Thanks.
Okay. Is there any old business? Nope. No new business? Okay. Our next meeting is September 29th, 2020. Somebody want to make a motion?
2022.
2022, I apologize, thank you. Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.